Hello, we are going to uh school committee at six thirty three. We're going to open the meeting um and then we're going to go into an executive session. Since everyone is in person, we do not have to take votes by a row except for executive session. So I'm going ahead and oh wait, under executive session. M G L chapter thirty A, section A, pre discuss. Lot of bargaining with the teachers and study juniors and chapter. Twenty one eighty two uh conducted strategy sessions in preparation for those. With nine channels. We'll have a different amount of time of the bargaining position. And then chair sort of players um and the committee will return to open meeting at seven o'clock. Okay, so we enter into taking session. Um Mara?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Evening, good evening, this school committee is now back in the open session, I'm going to go ahead and. We need to this deal as chair this meeting on for all members in person, anticipated on the agenda presenting to hearing. Uh school committee members, oh we've done this part earlier uh student representatives uh.
Oh, you're she mom.
Uh Kayla? That Kayla join? Yeah, okay um staff when I call name, please respond with affirmative. Home and garden?
Yes.
Brian House?
Yes.
Chapter genius?
Yes.
Wait. Here, right?
Yes. The oh, now I can't, yes, I'm here.
Great, um this open meeting of the mayor's school committee is being conducted as a hybrid, as a valid by chapter two of the act of the public twenty three. Signed into law by Governor Healy on March twenty nine, twenty twenty three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions. For requiring the open meetings and public access until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. This committee is being uh zoomed in person as close to the district's website. While I'll shoot for a location, you know, participation in volume as a courtesy to the public, we will not suspend your attempts. If you have a lot of problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to vote attendees unless otherwise required by law, please note this meeting is being recorded. That other folks may be able to see you and take care not to reach to your computer. Maybe that you broadcast may be captured by a recording which is audible to you and you will buy a couple. If you're planning to record or broadcast this. So raise your hand function now, stood by the chairs. I I thought. They don't see me beyond. You know, meeting materials. Along with the agenda, most size materials are available on the computer school committee. Which I was talking about three twenty. So the chat school. Public is encouraged to follow along with the steps of agenda and documents unless the chairman of the other vice. The public comments agenda item is a devoted time for the school to appear in the public as such as structured, kind of supports in bidirectional reporting of public comments. Rather than a bi-directional conversation. Here are general rules for any public. Period. Any person wishing to speak to get a comment to our virtual meeting. May you survive such. Public advance up into the public comment agenda item. That we provided, please have your sleeping match that will make you want to let you use to speak. All public comments over the thirty minutes, three minutes. Make sure that every person wishes to comment has the opportunity to do that. The person may comment one or once without permission of the chair. Uh as time allowed, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Anyone wishing to spend a written comment? To be read by the chair, maybe you should like tell them advance up into the public comment agenda item. Comments for S V at mainer dot twelve dot A N S S. Subject one less than put time needs to be your first and last thing, you're trying to ensure that comments will be read. Comments will only be read in minutes. And please submit comments or lots of they will suspend that. Make sure all the comments can be read in their entirety, it's best to share each other for the box of things that have been first. However, submitted comments longer than three hundred words will be entered into the public record. Anyone would please submit the comment to the public record after. The public comments agenda I pass, since I'll throw me on comments for. S C meeting at mainer dot twelve dot A N S. Up into the end of the meeting, so maybe save your comments. From where go on? From our speaker after we know last, remember the end. Questions, comments, motions. I'll go through a lot of community meeting this fall, there's a way that generates, help generate editor. And by. Vote to you in his name will uh actually conduct this side of the executive session. Um. Will not. To have viable call just like I'm sure. Uh now that they return back into open session. I just want to go ahead and. Um. Make a motion that we approve and ratified. And away between the school meeting, still on for July first, twenty twenty four through June the thirty of twenty twenty seven. And to offer and its chair, school committee to sign on. Alright, um any further discussion? Okay, um Brian, just think. Oh, art's all coming. I know, I wasn't discussing. Trying to make everyone more um for having a successful negotiation for. For studying and for um just everyone for um for all the work they do for helping their help. So our please be. Right? Agreed, yes, motion, yes? Yeah. Hey. I'm watching theirs. Um Brian, any others for business? Okay. Public comments? Yes.
Okay. Not many of you people know, my name's Ed Bull. And. I'm here for alumni field.
I can just get your address real quick, sorry.
Five days circle made. And uh. I was a public school member, very interested in the schools and the town. And uh all my children and grandchildren come to me back, so I applaud what you do. So I'm here to give you touch and it's my impression that. The school committee is in charge of alumni field and it's a main interest for me. So I wrote down some bullet points. That. I will go over with you. And I'll leave it at that, then you can make them believe them and uh. So I'm sorry, I don't have any more. Okay, so. I have a uh fine history with the field, all the citizen and. Been seventy years involved with that. And as I wrote here, uh this is an important gateway. To maine, there were two places in maine that are gateways, downtown and alumni field. And in mind, first of all, people know that are involved. And they know that I've had a history here and come up the and complain. So I say, okay, and I listen to them and I what what am I, I would cock and shot say somebody, so I found out the Mary. Hope uh when you have a meeting and I felt that I should express as a public citizen. My concern and perhaps uh. A way that we could solve these concerns. You can take them and move forward with them, or at least I would like you to consider them for discussion. And just think about that. Uh I've thought about the alumni field for a long time. And it is a small process and to me and to the people who complained to me, it hasn't gone faster. So. The first thing I have here is you can see major point stands. It's yeah terrible. And they are an eyesore. For example, I went to the track meet yesterday or the day before, three or four different towns. My granddaughter brothers from Maine High School. Walking around and the stands got the yellow tape and it just isn't an eyesore and we don't present ourselves enough. To me, I've talked to the guys that walk around and those stands can be taken down. And as far as I'm concerned, they should be taken down sooner rather than later. I've talked to the guys from the D P W, they can take them down, you initiated. If you want to take the all of them down, I've talked to Mike about it, he would like the uh. The speaker stand there uh the press box, that could stand alone. But if you took the other stands down, that would tell the community, hey, the things are starting to happen. And if you call or work with the public works, perhaps they could do in a day. Take those scans down, remove the yellow tape, ravel it up and then move on. It's. I have fifty thousand dollars now. So we have spent. From my information, fifty thousand dollars on temporary stands. And another twenty five thousand dollars starting next year. And another, maybe another fifty thousand, that's one hundred thousand dollars. Gone. Where if we had sat at this plan two or three years ago, we could have saved the community one hundred thousand dollars. Okay? I went to CPA money as a citizen and I don't know if I can motor block. But when I was on the school building committee, it was referred to me that anytime you want to renovate stands, you can use CPA money. And to me, that's an urgent thing for the community of Maine. So as a school committee member of full board, if you went to the CPA committees, which I don't know where they are, they're downtown hall. And say, look, we have an urgent concern that we could use taxpayer money that's already there. Bought something to renovate the stands and you wouldn't have to go to the general tax lot and use the CPA money. So. I had an overall plan in my head as I walk around there, I walk around there twice a week, okay, so. First of all, as I said through the stands. Second of all, the clubhouse, you go to Clinton, go to Littleton. Similar towns to Maine and they have public restrooms and and that old wheelhouse has all the plumbing, all electricity, that can be used. For public bathrooms, when you have the football games, soccer games and all the public events out there. They instead of the bounce houses, you could use in the bathroom. Okay? Of course, if you think a general idea, which is. What I feel should happen is that there should be a total package to fix that whole 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 area. I know we can hit the. The new migration and of course I supported the uh the new school. Okay, if you put something together. For the community to see that you are going to renovate the stands, you're going to renovate the field, you're going to renovate the tennis courts, you're going to renovate the bathroom. You come up with a number and verify that for the community because it's a community, community thing with lots of people who's there. And if you could get that guy, same, I don't even like to talk to him, I'll throw in that fully. And you put that on as a budget item and then you get in and you involve the whole community, I think, I think a lot of. And for the instantaneous names I wrote down, as I walk around, first of all, I picked the rubbish up. All rubbish, put them in the cans, so it's that that's clean. The mowing is very good. The guys who will reach out mowing uh and they they care for the peels as as all the green here. There's a lot of rain in these, we've done, who take a couple of hours, all the tennis courts have leaves all around them. And I always said when I was a slacker of school, you take care of the little things and the people outside say, hmm. Take it interest in this. So I don't know how your roles and how that director comes down here and on the there. But. I know the guys have worked here, but if you say, hey, I want you to, like, in front of the wheelhouse, it's all. Stones and all kinds of uh twigs and and while the tennis courts, you go to every other town, there's no leaves in the corners, there's no leaves outside. That that should be a certain, hey, a couple hours. Okay, in front of the clubhouse where I bought my truck. Needs ground. And uh that's one thing, so. Um that's all I can say, if you have any questions, I'll be, this is my presentation, I just wanted to give you a citizen's perspective. And I will tell. People who complain to me that I've come to the official board. Daughter was a resident of Maine, a kid by the main, I always complained about those scans, yeah, what can we do? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and I would want to make sure I don't mind getting too much. Yeah, but I I would love to maybe connect online about some of the, there's a website that has a lot of project information. Uh what's going, what's going on on the back of some of those things that you question. Um so maybe afterwards, if you have interest or some way that maybe you share some information.
Sure.
Um either right.
Get mine?
Um, okay. Okay, yeah.
I've been interested in doing it right and uh. Saving time as well.
So is it your first name?
And but you know. Um E T M U L L Y. And M S N dot com. This is my my companion here. She was talking to you.
Well, I very much appreciate that. So I can thank you very much and I just, I don't, I don't want to just sidetrack on on the public comments, because I'm sure the one has feedback, but I wanted to send over some information backwards and then we um.
Is there, is there another uh co- committee involved, are they? Is there lodges?
There's a trust force, there's a design. Their project.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh yeah, so I'll send over some information, we'll start with that, um that might a little like give a good place for some information, see, speaks of the beach brought up. That um likes to start to share with other people, what is already on the way and um and also what I mean.
I was screaming, it's just our videos, this is uh a slacker. Uh what's the?
This is the, the school committee makes the votes for action. Um I feel there are multiple people who are providing complete of boards, planning board has been involved. All their designs are on the way. For features, so that kind of stuff that I'm.
Just tell me who um. Um who budget money for a sculptor?
Designed, designed approved last year, but money for designs and then and the ball, you're going to see some other votes for.
Yeah. You have a scope, the eyesore again, evening. Are you, are you hearing me on the stands, that's the first. Yeah, you did, you're hearing that, so I don't know what. How you can remember that, but it would be my hope you would uh listen to me and the people of. But.
Loud and clear.
Okay, and. I thank you very much.
Thank you for your support and all of our time, it's been years, I've, I I.
Oh.
Always wanted to have your support.
Yeah.
Thank you, and your wife.
Well. Education, the foundation of. I don't know if you know that, my mother taught us picture. I'm a teacher thirties and sevens.
Wow, wow.
So nineteen forty one, when she had me, she had quit. Because ladies couldn't teach. So she stayed away for twenty years, then she got forty for twenty years to. Sevens.
Wow.
That's the ball, it's going, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night now.
Bye, thank you. Seven minutes, you don't really find. Um, okay. Um student representatives report. Hey. Hi, what's your name?
Hi. So for our highlights, we have the Stuco Earth Day event was held on April tenth. Brandeis professor, Dr. Sally Warner brought her warming stripes banner, many groups worked on climate positive projects. Um April break was last week. Um Alva, Alvaro Gonzalez's senior project, alto saxophone recital was a success. Same with Tessa Gilligan's senior project, a self-defense class. Um baseball is so far undefeated in their season and softball both had games over break. And track had their first home meet uh yesterday. Or Tuesday. Um, Concerns and Solutions, the homework pilot, teachers voted to end the pilot. And SAC brainstormed next steps. Um field day date needs to be scheduled ASAP, actually at our Stuco meeting this morning, we did pick a date which is. May twenty fourth or no, maybe it was June eighth we switched it to, it was. A whole thing, um for upcoming, we have pops night on Friday. Thrift Maynard is Harry Lenachek senior project that's coming up in a couple of weeks. The Maynard History Scavenger Hunt is Megan Ray's senior project and that is this Saturday. Um One Love is a healthy relationships training for seniors. Um the mock accident for prom attendees will be next week. And the Addison Gallery Field Trip is also next week for many students to see an exhibition of historical photographs from across the USA.
Perfect, um go around Elizabeth.
Oh yeah, thanks so much, and I have a question about what was the homework pilot and? What, what are the next steps?
Um what was the homework pilot? It was a civics action project last year by one of Mr. Paterno's classes. And it was that homework should not exceed three times a week for more than either thirty or forty five minutes. Um. And that was in addition to the school committee homework policy. Um it's pretty controversial among teachers, it was voted in at the beginning of the year, but. They voted to end it recently because um. It restricted. Their essential rights to teach their students and give them assignments, in their words, um. The next steps are pretty unclear because um. As this homework policy didn't work, it's going to be, it would be difficult to pilot another one. Because it's pretty clear where the teachers stand and where the students stand and it seems to be pretty different sides. So um. Next steps were not really decided, though they were.
Thank you so much.
Mary, yeah, Kayla, did you do, um when you guys were doing, trying to figure out the pilot, did you um interview other towns, other school systems to see what they were doing?
Um, I'm not sure because it was a junior class last year, so current seniors, um. But I imagine they did do some research, we've also discussed different um schools homework policies around us in SAC because there's like. One school that doesn't do any homework and other schools with like more restrictive homework policies, um. And I think it's pretty agreed upon that the students would like to see. A homework policy that restricts what teachers can assign and the teachers are basically of the opposite mind, so. It's kind of an impasse right now.
Thank you. I was at the, one of the SAP meetings last year, but talking about the work policy um and how. Yeah, I was super disappointed to hear that they voted to end it, so you know, before the full year, I was really hoping that at least we'd get one year. To kind of figure that out, so. Um. Yeah. Sorry to hear that.
I am too.
Um, did you have any questions? Can you um clarify, is there like um what the vote was, the teacher that just wondering the line weight, what was the concern? You mentioned about, is it about autonomy, that they felt that it was restrictive to how they are able to teach?
Yes. So I'm not um exactly, I wasn't there, it was at one of their faculty meetings. Um and I'm not sure what exactly the vote was, but I'm, I think it was, well, it was obviously majority. But um I think it was a good amount of teacher, it was, most teachers wanted to end it. And from my understanding, they just felt, oh, um, it was brought up that uh. Teach, some teachers felt that it had become disruptive to their classes because. Every time they tried to assign a homework policy, students responded by like quoting this homework policy and claiming what they were doing. Went against it, which, I mean, I'm, I've never experienced that personally, um. I think I might have an idea of. Some of the teachers who felt that way and I think um. The homework policy, it it was definitely controversial and uh there were a lot, a lot of reports of teachers violating it. So I can see where that idea might come from because I've been in classes where um I've participated in discussions and basically the teachers. Uh the students come into the teacher and saying, hey, you've assigned us four assignments this week, that goes against the policy. And there's been some mixed responses between teachers, mostly displeasure upon hearing that and yeah.
Which is the inconsistency and how it was being by also caused for how it was found and and also it became more of a contentious point in class. Uh that. Cost conflict that led to the other day was more disruptive. Then helpful, yeah, set correct.
That was, that was one point of view, yes. Um. I think. Mostly those came from when teachers were. Violating the homework policy and so again, it just comes down to they feel like they should have the freedom to assign as much homework as they deem necessary.
Brian, uh I know the principle you were, because you're uh here, but at some point, maybe it would be helpful if someone who's a teacher in that school that can. Share their perspective on. Uh their experience with this pilot, you know, I don't know about the students, but I'm curious to. Here also how teachers, their experience with the pilot. And you know, the more about the vote. And is there opportunity, I guess, I would probably look at the policies of committee, is there opportunity, like, to give out or information to the policies of committee? To improve it somewhat, maybe not. But I don't know, some strides. Yes. Yeah. Get down, right, yeah, we try this. So that would, that would be my, my thought is like, how do we get the teacher, I'd like to hear if the teacher's very experienced. But maybe they have some suggestions, like incremental, sometimes you can't get everything, but maybe incremental changes that might. Okay. And then. Uh I, the. Some uh, oh, the problem. Mock accident for prom attendees. Is the problem, I know this came up last time, I was going to say the prom, I don't know if it was the price increase. Was the price increase and it seemed so questionable or uh is everything okay with that, I just wanted to.
Um, the prom ticket cost this year was sixty five dollars and last year was sixty, so I believe. Um. I don't know if it was the school committee that someone said was gave approval for the increase, which um. I didn't hear complaints about it, I mean, obviously, no one wants to pay that much money for a prom ticket, but um. As someone who just started their classes prom committee, I can certainly attest that it is very expensive, so the tickets. The ticket prices are unfortunately, I see them as a necessary evil, so.
Go ahead.
Um, one thing about prom, one thing about homework, for the prom, um is there a mechanism for kids to go and get a quarter sixty five dollars?
Yeah, um that, I'm not sure exactly where it comes out of, I assume maybe the class government funds, but um that. There are several students who are having their tickets being paid for by um, I was told it's by Ms. Thompson, I'm assuming that's her acting on behalf as a class advisor. Um, so I'd assume that comes out of the class fund and not her pocket, but yes, there is um a way for students who can't afford prop tickets to still go.
That's great, um my question about the homework pilot is, were teachers, how, were teachers involved with coming up with a pilot or was it a student run? Student idea that was sort of just imposed on teachers?
So I believe they were involved, I know the civics action project is led by um Mr. Paterno, it was his class, um so he's very involved in the process, um. And I believe part of the process was talking to different teachers. And um it was definitely not just a, hey, this is what we want, and I believe there were like surveys that went abound to both the students and the teachers. So yeah, they were definitely a part of the decision-making process.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one more thing, um Kayla, is it possible for us on our, on these. That we get, is it possible to have a little more information on them? So like, for example, if it said, you know, this was what the pilot was, that would be helpful to have, so just having, there was a pilot. And on here, when you have like. And on here, when you have like, you know, Harry Lenachek Senior Project is coming up, like, what day? You know, when, when is this, is there something like, when is this, um, when is this possible? Um, for sale, you know, and those kinds of things, when is this government, you know, if we could have that information written on here, I think that would be really nice to have ahead of time.
Yeah, um, I, I apologize for lack of information lately on our reports, um. In, in the past, um, so far, what we do is we write the outline of the report essentially, and then. Um, usually Principal York goes in and adds detail, but we haven't been doing that lately. We've, I mean, we've been doing the outline during. Um. SAC, but, um, so lately, it's become like a last-minute. Uh, effort to add the details. So, yeah, we, we will definitely get back to proper reports.
You, and, and then, I don't know, are we, um, is there any? Are we thinking at all of highlighting some of the student work during the SAP meetings that have been here, or are we gonna have? I don't know, are we thinking about having them? There's something totally, yeah, seems. Two or three years there, or? You know, very interesting happening.
They just, I think that's what they started, they just speak to them. Um, cuz they mentioned actually this one, the last three reports, they talk about this project, and I was, the last seven is a.
So I don't know if we have to especially invite them, or, you know, Kaylee, you just have to like arrange that. The last couple of meetings we have up here.
I would be. Presenting, I have kids for not much time, and. Yeah, I go.
But I think we should go, what I'm saying, that I just had to.
Degrees for the public. No, sure. But like, maybe I could use a coin as a pepper, that's what I'll have of this whole committee, maybe they may have been interested in the word, so.
Thank you so much, Kaylee. Kaylee, I have one more question for you. Um, you're, did you had yours rescheduled your, uh. Your election, did that happen already, or is it still yet?
Yeah, um, that was the week before vacation, and. I did not get the position I was running for, but because I was, I had the second highest amount of votes, I'm a delegate on the board. So I am still on the board, so that is a success. Um. And next year, I'll probably rerun, though I'm not sure for what position. Um, so, yeah, my first meeting's in May.
Yeah, congratulations, Fran, I'm excited for it. Yes, yes, and please keep us updated on how, how this new role works for you too. I know this is new for everybody. Here, so thank you for representing well.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on, um, superintendent report.
Let's see, we, we saw the report in the folder already, lots of good news that mean of public schools. Um, the Rotary Club of Neshova, Neshova. Uh, awards scholarships to local students for Global Youth Leadership Awards, and one of our students, I need all. So congratulations to her.
Say thanks to Chuck for.
Yeah.
This is all, and Chuck has been instrumental in bringing Maynard into the fold of Neshova, so I really appreciate that. Great organization.
Senior projects are happening, which we just sort of heard a little bit about, but I think I've shared all the information with you all on a couple of different lanes. And if you wanna sign up, um. There's panel presentations on May seventeen, there was an email, I can resend it, but it's all. This document in the folder, so you can find out. Arrange your personal work schedules to be, be able to attend. If you haven't ever attended, it's well worth it. If you've done it, you know it, it's exciting. Not a, very rewarding. And I think for school committee, it's super exciting, cuz it's all what you support, the budget, the policies. All the time and energy put in, this is when it comes to solution for students. So hopefully you'll be able to, uh, attend some of those. And see them first again, it's a lot. Uh, the solar project update, so we are making progress. I know that's sort of been. Talked about in a long time, but it's, we can see the canopy is up in front of school, they did a really nice job of. Uh, just groundwork, putting earth back and putting ground back together. They've been working with the tree committee, the mayor tree committee, so they have the right number of trees and right locations of where they'll be planted. Uh, when they're done over April break, they did do the trenching, which was, they've been really good about schools, you see. Vacation time, so we did all of our, uh, vacation programming at, at follow school, so they could do the trench. And thank you to school committee for approving the additional funding, so that they can put extra conduit in the trench now. Which will allow us at any point in the future to add electronic charging stations without having to retrench. So it's basically empty conduit that later can be run through, uh, that's built in already. Up at the building, and it will be at solar. Uh, canopy.
It's like eighty thousand dollar. Bump a couple of times, like. Stations, and so Ryan.
So they're not in this.
It's.
We, the infrastructure, so we can do it, and much less.
Well, what's ability to do that? If she had some done to be known, and said they were going to have.
I'll have her clarifying that. Uh, I mean, though they're working on the wood, they worked on roofs. And at some point between now and the end of the year, uh, Byron and Bobby. We actually, we both. Seen him, but he's very responsive, and he's guy, this site superintendent. What's what I would call him, for the construction company, for select. Um, they're putting, they'll work with the administration, teachers who want. Um, regarding the educational component of the solar project, so they, we won't be able to see our data yet. So the way that was, like, they finished the project, they put their information into a resource, and then we'll sort of get it cute. So. Little bit outside our control. We wait for them to come and actually test it, and then they make the line, we can practice with them. So the data, it's just different data. What's it look like, how does it work, how can we implement that? So that's already been talked about, uh, by me, so they're on work at that.
It'd be great to get, uh. Having that built in some type of regular show with the student groups, I don't know, you know, whoever that being. Um, greeting, so there is, uh, that they can just like, the updates on versus the remains, or whatever it might be, just so that becomes our, works a lot.
Absolutely, it's exciting. Definitely coming along.
And then, um, just to have these questions or thought about. Maybe, I'm, I'm guess, maybe one. Structured this, maybe that might be a good opportunity to.
Yeah, if we can send pictures.
Right, and just that might be the question to clarify, this is what it, you know, what it is.
So it'll probably, if that's the case, it'll probably be some sort of update at the end of the year, cuz it won't be live at the end of the year, and then over the summer, you know. A structure will be completed, a learning power, and so on, and maybe it will, yeah, I don't wanna speak for that. You're gonna hear from Chuck about the Student Opportunity Act, which, that's a whole piece of the agenda, so I'll sort of skip that for this, I just wanna do that, have some. Basic information about it. Um, and somebody already nicely mentioned that, like, already the athletic director asked his. Uh, National Industries Class to get what it. Industries Association certification as an athletic administrator. That's big deal, teachers can do national boards, nurses can do national boards. Um. Um, but it's, it's an accomplishment, it, uh, work, uh, effort, um, and the values. So, we're, we're proud.
It's important to its.
Absolutely.
It's great over there.
Absolutely, exactly, kudos to them. Uh, dream, so some of this was just, you already know, green medal principal certain completed, we're happy that. Linkquist is, will be the principal next year, we're starting the assistant principal search for the green medal. We're partway through the Director of Student Services search, we have two finalists coming next Wednesday to this building. To meet with staffing board, community members, and myself, um, so we should have some of that, next. And that's great, getting these big, strong committee with parents, staff, care, Janus. Facilitated that, we job, so moving ahead there.
Overlapped, so they just. Just person.
I don't wanna overly promise, I would say that we can encourage that, both candidates are fully employed as right now. Well, that doesn't mean, to your point, and I think they would agree. They would love to take a day or a term or something to come and see what. So I would. Yeah, so, okay, we will work on that.
Uh, especially that position.
Yep. Agreed, and we are currently still working on the Director of Facilities, which we started, we had, uh. A few interviews that didn't. We didn't find the person that we wanted at this point, so we're continuing and we'll sort of continue. We'll find some, but.
You repost that?
Yeah, we probably, we reposted it, we tweaked it a little, we had a salary in there. See if that attracted some people, and, and there's some more people applying, so we'll wait for that.
Is it posted as the director of facilities? Okay, I, I just, I know we went back and forth with this.
Yep.
Last time. Know that it helps.
I hope so, we hope so, yes. But, I mean, I, I, I'd say fine, because Tony has, you know, worked with him, so he's actually the head custodian. And then we have lead at each building, and if there's anything that really comes up that's bothering me. Unexpectedly, he is willing to step in that. You know, take on some of this responsibility temporarily. So, we're, we're in good shape, we're very fortunate. Um, you know what? You could probably push for that condition at any time, uh, headed into summer, I'd love to have somebody on board, cuz that's when the act, authority of just. Cleaning and trapping projects that we can't do during the school, yeah, so. The sooner the better, have somebody on board, you say the right person. So, yeah, we, we could do an interim if we get to that point, and I feel like we were the.
Just that summer, like, project, you'd be stuff that is that, uh, like.
Yeah, and I don't think, we won't talk behind, you'll get people that. Still that boy.
Yeah, the town.
So.
Um. All right, so. Go as he wants.
You, Student Opportunity Act. Uh, this, required by the state, the law districts, three-year plan is submitted. Um, what you have for you was the plan that will be submitted this year, uh, you can need a vote of the school. Um, to. What happens after the initial year is there is updating each year, but you don't have to submit to the same way that that would do once every three years. The numbers you see here are not new spending, um. The numbers in here are also spread over three years, uh. If I was to summarize. Sort of big picture, Student Opportunity Act. Basically, to ask districts, do you look at data? Um. Student achievement data, attendance data, do you work in co-op? That's sort of one question, Student Opportunity Act. A second question, eh, which is the meat of the, uh, SOA, is. Uh, what does the district currently do to address the items that have been identified through data? Um, so that's where the money comes in. So if we, uh, for example, are working on the. Three items that are listed here, those three items come out of our data. We know that we need to work on early intervention and mathematics that sort of layer in data, particularly a great. For, we saw real disparities, chronic absenteeism, uh, subgroups. Uh, English learners, Hispanic Latino students, students, disabilities, students with. From low-income families, uh, their chronic absenteeism rates were, were markedly higher than other students. Um, and we also noted, uh, achievement gaps and MCAS scores, but also using, uh, math data, and we saw achievement gaps. Particularly with English learners, uh, students and Hispanic Latino students. So the three areas that we've identified in the data, uh, this was discussed with the, uh. Uh, district leadership team, it's also been discussed with the BL Act. I've seen discussed in all variety of forms, with special education parents, um, so. Here's, uh, then raw input into, we're being, if we're gonna be focusing in the state record, that's one, two, or three areas. That needs the three areas that we want to focus on. Um, then as you get into the, the meat of the, uh, proposal. Uh, you'll see that, uh, here is a section on how we communicate, uh. With parent groups, here's a section on how we analyze the data, um. Here is a section that says we will agree to meet DESI targets, uh, over the next three years to try to close gaps in these areas. I do wanna say a couple of things here, um. DESI has not put the targets out, that they asked all districts to agree to the targets. Um, if you, if you say, no, we don't agree, cuz we don't know what they are, and you don't get any SOA funds. So, it's an act of faith on the part of districts, um. Uh, the, uh, final section gets into the details of. Um, how each of the three areas we identify will be addressed with the funds that the district commits each year. Now, again, this is not new spending, uh, we know that we're gonna spend money on professional development, you know, that money's already been set aside. This spells out what portion of that money will be dedicated to these three items, so I can't stress enough that this is not new spending. Um. At the end of all this, the outcome of all this is if the school committee approves the plan. Uh, the state, DESI, then says, uh, you have used data, you have identified, um. For the areas to work on, and as a result, we will give you some additional funding to support these areas. So you have some idea, last year, uh, that was about thirty-four thousand, uh, so. On top of what the industry already does, here's thirty-four thousand more dollars to help with these areas. There is, uh, the state has not indicated yet what the funds will be for districts this year, but they have put out the formula. That was used last year, and the formula that you're going to use this year. Uh, when I look at the, uh, formula as it applies to Maynard, um, it appears. That because we had a growth, particularly in, um, EL students, that it's likely. That that thirty-four thousand dollars might go up, but I wouldn't get real excited, you know, it might go from thirty-four to thirty-seven. Or something like that, but.
In the numbers to start.
Yeah. Yeah, thirty-ish, I think it'll still be thirty-ish, it'll be somewhere in the thirties, but. I don't think it's going to go down based on the formula they put out, it might go up a little bit. So, um, I do need approval of plan, uh, we wanted to check the final box to submit it to the state. Um, and again, it's kind of like the contract, and the contract is, we look at data. We identify some groups that need additional support, we do commit district funds to that effort. And if we fulfill our part of that contract, then the state will give us some additional funding to support.
I will clarify questions. The plan, so this is for twenty-four, twenty-three. We took the eight, four, one, five, but is it three-year?
Yeah, it's a three-year.
Okay, so that's, I just want to clarify, so they would want to put it for twenty-four to twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-five, five, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay, so twenty-four, so basically it would be for fiscal year twenty-five, they're just go to twenty-seven. Okay, um, so that was one question, and then, uh. Another one, I'm saying that this is kind of, how is the, just this? I mean, this is more basic, I know we don't get, it's not our chapter seventy. So is there a separate allocation that comes in that I don't see it as a grant? I'm just, I'm just curious on where we would see the thirty-something. Or is it, or is it built in, I don't know, Wayne, you're, you're, Wayne might know this, and if you don't know now, we can just, we follow up. Cause how did, you can say that we character received it, so.
I didn't look at what.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Sorry, Wayne, I just, for, you don't know now, but just a follow-up, I'm curious on. The Student Opportunity Act funding that we get allocated, or every town gets allocated. Does that, is that built into the chapter seventy? Funds, or does that come separately as a separate allocation that we get? Like a grant or something outside of what our budget, I mean, so that would be what I, I think the school committee, what I have a better understanding of.
I, I, I think chapter seventy. Excuse me. I think SOA is included in the chapter seventy, but I can verify that.
Yes. That, that's fine, if you could, if you could, um, just confirm if the Student Opportunity Act is part of chapter seventy. Which means we actually don't benefit directly from it, it goes to fund the town, that would be helpful to understand. Can we get that? Well, I mean, it's, we're getting less, that is where it kind of is a larger conversation, uh, of, we're. But I think just at the expense for it, I just wanna make sure that. I guess the bigger picture for me is thinking about if we are committing, we can't cut this kind of stuff. Right, because we are committing, we have a plan, so I just wanna make sure our, our vision, our budget process aligns with. What we're saying, our program, what we're committing to, if we're, you know, to this plan that we've done.
I think we committed to this, so that would be a very.
But, you know, I remember spending an extra thirty thousand dollars to accomplish these three goals, and. The state is giving. Us money, but it gets redirected toward the well. That's. Like, that's not fair.
No, I, I agree, that's not fair, but what I'm saying is we would spend these funds anyway. And we, if the thirty thousand from them, if we can, we can add a lot of that. All the more bodies.
Right, I mean, it's clearly just wing more than thirty thousand dollars, yeah, so I think it's just more, uh, this is not any applesauce. Yes, this was a seven hundred, it's way, right, so it's not, you know, I feel it's from our budget, I think it's more, uh, somewhat.
Yes.
Yeah. Goes back to. Anyway. Uh, uh, alright, I was, do you have any other questions?
No, that was gonna be my question, this is the money for the town or us?
Laura, I'm sorry, that's basically my, my question, I was agreeing, I would not again.
It's for a tip.
I just, I just.
It is for a tax.
I could look at.
Yeah, well, when, when Kate may all talk about, like, all, all this chapter seventy, I'm like, or, you know, student opportunity, this is what I'm saying, yeah. You know, it's getting, yeah, it, it, but I don't other town have that billion, I know, every. But it, it just seems to me that if the state, if the state is giving us that money. For, for, to go toward this, then we should be putting that money toward this.
Well, and when Greg created this budget, he wasn't coming for this thirty thousand dollars, because we haven't applied for it yet, right? So. Well, I know, like, when the town gets an extra thirty thousand dollars that wasn't budgeted. That should just get. Shifted over.
Right.
Since it wasn't already accounted for.
I would say, though, that it's super gonna get it, just this more of supporting documents justified. Yeah, so that makes it to this. Then they would maybe take it away, they could. Yeah. I don't know.
But I feel like there's some entitlement there, it's about.
Man, that's all. Um, Mary?
Yeah, no, was this, it's just the first time that we've had to submit this.
No. That's right.
Every three years, and the event process is much simpler. Yes, so you get the, you get the whole, you, you, you get the whole deal once every three.
Mary. No, say. Lisbon? Okay, so, uh, so then I will, uh, Chuck, thank you very much for all the work on this. I will make sure that we prove the twenty-two. Uh, the fiscal year twenty-five to the fiscal year twenty-seven, Student Opportunity Act Plan, as. And any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, budget, Brian?
You seem, you know. Um, I know it'll surprise you when I tell you that it hasn't changed, uh. It's changed, we're still. Moving forward with. A minimum service budget of twenty-three million, six hundred and twenty-nine, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, and that includes. So. It does, uh, it includes eight hundred thousand dollars of, you'd say, of our fall. Uh, but that dollar hasn't changed in quite some time. Hasn't changed on, on side, I, so I, in my top regularly be. And, uh, it hasn't. Even this week, it not indicated that they need to reduce. Any allocation, he hasn't indicated that he's found any money through the backyard. But I'll take non-reduction as a positive sign, so we know what we're able to have with the medium, we're able to have a feed from. Revolving accounts, and we're slowly, but surely moving forward, and you know, there are some things that we really. That, you know, we struggle to get, and I think that's true, we watch the news across the state, lots and lots to ask for override here and. The overwhelming. Jordan.
Yeah, they were today, just tell the other guys. And they're cutting a lot of school programs.
So, so there's a lot.
So these, these contracts that have gotten. And they're having to go back in.
And overturning strong, meaning the law, if you need. I'm gonna go soon, I'm gonna go actually hit the button to submit.
Budget update. When we were speaking with Greg, so there were, um, the budget is still based on the governor's recommend. Budget, although they, uh, the. House came out with their, it's not a like smish, but Greg still. Change that, um. There is some changes to, uh, give us some free cash help, that we'll put in there, but basically, uh. Or monies that were for town budget, and if there is an increase for the school, it would, uh, it would be, uh. In the fall, that he would recommend a change in the budget at that time. So, that, I just wanted to add, to add that, so things so far don't look like the town, uh, the state is, is going down, that it might have some. Uh, opportunities there, smish, there, go up, or he did actually, uh, recommend. Adding some funding for the health insurance, I think that's where the act, the one that came back higher, the act, or this one, which is that. So, um, can we, you have any additional budget questions?
Okay, it's my question, but as a comment, I have been concerned obviously that what town understands the risk we're taking. By using revolving accounts and what the effect that will have in years to come. Um, and they weren't really understanding that we could keep meeting our needs through that, but that's not a long-term solution. And I talked to some folks in town over the last week, and I've. Hearing that they actually understand that, but to, in a different way than I see it. Um, and that there's frustration with us for doing it, um, and not thinking it's the right thing, uh. Which I still think it is the right thing, but I, I hadn't, I was surprised to hear that, um. I don't know what they would force to be doing.
So is there a perspective to keep the money in the revolving accounts? Yeah, and.
Taking a break, go for it, my school.
Yeah.
Why aren't we stepping up?
Well, there are actually people who have that con.
And I could be bad. Select for, for school, they try to say work within your means. And I push back, uh, because it is very disruptive to cap snap turnover like that. You know, and I think it's, I think it's short-sighted, uh. Approach, uh, I hear, I hear what you're saying, but I think that there may be some people on boards who are not happy with the decision. What I say to them is it's our decision to make, and that's the way we'll decide to.
And I feel like we're being forced to make that decision at this point, of course, um, I don't feel like we're.
If, if any of our goal, um, there were people who wanted us to cut our budget, and I think. Um, our goal has been continuously to advocate what's the best interest of students and the programs, and this is what it requires to provide that. So, you know, um, they are, I, I agree, the board is awesome, to be run by the school committee. Um, they feel like their, their voice is not being heard that way. Look so, so many are trying to push the system forward and ending at its top that. You know, I, I challenge any, any board member to come to accomplish the school many, and actually say, I think we should have laid some money on.
No, I didn't think those were.
Well, whatever, that, that's what was the result of even not using revolving funds, eh? Yeah, that I, we're gonna stop them, this is the objective of it. That just was, alright, um, I'm sorry, that was basically like triggered me, because I've heard it before, and people should talk about it, just. So disrespectful to our staff.
Well, I mostly just wanted to say that we, we have a thought, I feel like we're, we're forcing that option, that it's not the goal, it's not. Nobody wants to be doing it.
Yeah. Laura, when can we find out the final numbers for prom state? Um, they, depends, they, they might go June, sometimes it's all the way, and so, yeah, they don't have like, they, yeah. No, that, no, they, they have to, they have to do like the one, one by one, to, there's like a certain, like what type could happen. Um, so I think, uh, last year, I wanna say it was June, like right towards June, that they, there was a budget for the state. But it could go even after, you know. Yeah, yeah, I, I actually, yeah, I do, I do recall, I never saw it go, it was like, you know, it was the middle of June, I mean, July.
I expect the show.
The first, I know the, the first, you know, new governor, um, they have a little extra time. And so I don't know, that's where last year was a little bit longer, because she's the, I was sorry, partner or leader. Uh, so hopefully that would be this year, but I, I guess they're allowed. So. Mary, um, no, I think about this budget, um, but I brought a separate sub-budget, any, so, budget, um. And I wanna bring it up again, I will be bringing it up again, uh, that my, my, oh, one big concern that I have. Two years down the road is we're starting to create a curriculum for which there are going to be licenses that are going to be up for renewal. And we are at the mercy of those licenses, we can't just say, well, we're gonna use these materials for another. Years, and I, we really need to consider how we're going to be, as tight as the budgets are. How I'm gonna be setting a little bit of money aside, so that we don't fall off the. When we got the literacy one now, we're gonna have the math one, we're going to science, you know, all of the types of licenses, they're smart. They want us to, they, they, you know, self-filling prophecy, so, um, we really need to take a step back at some point. Uh, I don't know how, but. To go in with eyes wide open. Following that, and I wanted to ask Chuck, because what we need to do is find out when that is going to happen. And I think Chuck said that there will be a point at which we will know what ones we're talking about, so that we can stand. I, I think that might be a good, uh. Maybe budgets of the goal next year is to really look at how. How those can be strategically scheduled or planned, like what does that forecast look like? What are the different licenses, right, because I know sometimes we get rid of, I think, places, yeah, so we do. That, that will go on my, that will fat and blocks. Right, and I want this, which is great, but again. I, I wasn't, now schools do that, some schools have stuff on books, uh, just, just saying it again, yes. That's, that's it, I think you're under, I, I thought you were gonna talk about overriding these.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll make you to June for that.
Yes, we did actually, uh, we did actually bring that up, that, uh. In the, the leadership meetings, uh, to speak, this is a reminder, because I have heard about scheduling that, uh, I guess, right. Uh, caps come to do the agenda, but I, I told them that the school. Uh, and I told Chris as well, it's gonna be very much making, or make sure that the overall conversation is part of that, it's not just about large projects. So, well, we have a, um, someone else who's afraid for that, so, that would be. For the needs. Yeah, because it's not a split board thing, uh, so I don't know, maybe Greg, I mean, um, Brian, you could check with Greg on. He mentioned caps, uh, doing, was the cast, I don't know if they're gonna be the ones, capital planning. Yeah, who's gonna be, so, who was he envisioning, so it's getting that, moderating that, okay, it will be a board for chair, for that board, or. So it would be four boards. We do have to vote on, on the budget, and. It all comes back to the money here, um. Where's that other? Revolving account, that's getting to this. Brian, you didn't.
I did send.
You said it to me, right, but I, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll send it, I can post it there, or we. I just wanna make sure, see the allocation of, like, I think. Have that in a separate document. What we had the last year.
Yeah, I said, I think.
That's fine. Sorry. Not in the, the motion. And those are the cost centers. Yeah, this was, uh. Yes, we send it to them. Yeah, if you can, just put it up. The budget plus. It should be there now. Thank you. Alright, so, uh. And we'll make a motion that. FY twenty-five. Uh, budget allocation of twenty-three million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. As revenue to each cross center. One thousand for one million, twenty-five thousand and twenty-three dollars. For photo, I guess, for cross center, two thousand for seventeen million, three hundred, seven thousand, six hundred. I know, oops. Cross center, three thousand for. One million four hundred sixteen thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. For cross center four thousand or one million. Nine hundred two thousand six dollars. That one for Fox Center. And for Fox Center nine thousand one thousand nine hundred twenty eight dollars five hundred. Twenty, thank you, one million nine hundred twenty five hundred and seventy dollars and. Yes, and recommended allocation to the world.
That.
I think that money includes.
That is not what to ask.
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, any further discussion? Oh, thank you, Simon, tomorrow's I, any further discussion? No, okay, uh, all in favor? And motion carries, yes, thank you very much. How you changed us? Uh, okay, Chair Report, uh, Colleen, I first wanted to take a moment to say thank you. For all who are doing, you and all our administrative assistants, but really you're just the brains behind every operation. So thank you for um your work. Now, all my needs, eight ninety, yeah, very much appreciated and I'm. I know Brian is a good multiple staff, but I just want to make sure that took a moment to acknowledge. Uh, we would not. Able to operate in. Really kind of weakness, so and not that Brian don't do a great job, you know? Yeah, so I'm calling, thank you, thank you for everything. Uh, I I wanted to just, I I went last week to the. Uh, the task force, the feels task force meeting. And mine, as I mentioned, mine and Mike Arias there. Conversation at one point turned to. Uh, setting a rock local for talking about. So the the. Was just really led by the recognition. They would, um, they're looking to think about a fall of twenty five. To have some type of fee structure. For the fee, so whatever tier version that might be, they were very much advocating for that. Uh, because they are. It would be, uh, whatever is related to school property, the school, and even ultimately go on, I told them that. Promotion, uh, a recommendation to the school, maybe by next spring, but for the budget season. So that, you know, there's opportunities to talk about it and whatever outreach coming to happen, but. That's the button for that, so.
Exactly, like continuation of what happened, yes, nobody wanted to take things because they will all be back. The next, so we'll bring that up again.
Yes, well, we, so, but. Yeah, so what happened, I mean, I think that was Brian, Brian would be the thought, you know, the one, I think also there was a level of distrust on. Who was using why plan, so right now, um, has one really, again, sort of her, to get, um. Work with Mike Arias, get everyone set up in L schedules so that they're now able to track. Um, usage, so practices, yeah, so the spring is the first season that. They're gonna be able to like fully track, the summer will be coming up and the next fall, you know, their their full season, they're able to really have them. So that will give them the store data, see, okay, who's using stuff? And then that can probably form. The next, I don't know what's gonna happen yet, but that's the idea is just gather data and then how that will. I will say that, uh. There hasn't been a lot of, just even though there's been invite invitation, there hasn't been a lot of participation from other town sport, uh, groups. They are lighting every meeting, uh, so I will try to shout out to a couple of, hey, so you know, this is coming up. Better women could go on into some pods. From next spring that. It will be, even though there aren't everything now, they take minutes, the the red con takes their minutes, they're gonna be, but I just. But so update.
Yeah, so question, why was, why was the. Maybe why are they pushing for it if the money would come to us?
No, the town, the town does not charge and has never charged.
The town doesn't charge.
So they want to start charging.
They were appreciating the profits here and so they, you know, they ran it and go better.
They also, uh, oh, oh, only now ready to mention actually the 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 board, you can run a report for May. Um, that they, you know, they're getting that cadence of that natural work at that, so all of that is kind of like that. I guess that buildup to to get to this place of now, it's how much is. What's being spent on the data, then that. I think people last time already know that there was a lot of questions left and the fees maybe did, you know, you could end up with the same result, to be honest, I don't know. This is the wrong scene. Field for creation committee, because that's what we were hearing was, well, we'll just go to the town. That because they don't chat, so we're on the same level because it costs everybody. Well, that's the other part too, is that suggested was at this meeting as well and, um, the part of policies and. What it falls, that also is a part of this, that's gonna be, that is, how do we have information? The conservation committee is also part of what we'll talk about, about. Uh, what's the, uh, the Brooklyn, um, so the management, we're trying to get the town, which I don't. So that they can do the scheduling even for crow, if you know, right now it's just being paper, but it's not just done. So all of this has been behind scenes, um, so it's very good momentum, I was really helping. Uh, promise, so promises that I.
I think we'll take a lot of the, um, pushback off of us because. We'll vote for it, the recommendation that will be behind it, conservation commission just then, but it. When, when it goes out to external folks. It will fall on climate, but it will fall on.
Yeah, it's gonna have, um, exactly, it's gonna be for the, uh. Regulation of all food orders. That's, that's the rule. So, uh, that's, that's really all that I have to add, um. Getting our report of May, that was.
I just said it, but there was a massive.
Thank you, and, um. Oh, uh, I know there was questions about any access that came up on retreat, so that it seemed like it wasn't a consensus, it was just maybe like. One member who wants to know how we're spending, Ryan did a great job. Answering the questions Greg had, uh, posted, so there was, uh, so. That's really all I have for the chair.
Um, not just reports, except for that as of. Go there, we, I was saying, our email, uh, with the survey. They first continue the school, it's a separate rate that you click on to the main and do the survey for that school. So it is, so it is a little bit, but it is actually what it is from here.
Eric, um, I just, I have a couple of questions or one comment, um. Question and sort of a segue from. This to Moses. Presentation, do we have to picture? Today. It was approved, I don't know, I was able to see, I know that the the. Expectations was, that's where I was gonna send my some links of what was posted, because what's. Okay, so I'll hold off until I just make sure it's okay, because the information on the bathroom, that's on the C P C. I'm so I'm wondering, you said something that could be sent out, sent out to the smarts or something?
It doesn't go anywhere.
But it would go to a lot of. Website, because you're, you have links with superintendent's page.
Right, but it'd be also sent it to the man of advantage.
Yeah, yeah, great too. Do you know, I'm. Okay.
But no, but I think it's a, it's a good point, we need to figure out how to.
Say very much you want. Yours so far.
You send them something, because I think they'll have to.
Like wanting to run something that's second, could we say like interested in the status alumni field or for info on alumni field and then. Like website, great, I'm just.
The marker that gets in it. Absolutely. I'm happy to provide.
You can find the back there.
So, yeah, right, that's what people see. Um, and then your question, I want to do this before it's been, um. Fortunately, besides, um, instead of Brian for you. Right? Just want to make sure that we're not.
I was gonna bring that up and we definitely need to re just review the timeline so we can figure out, but then on the agenda next year it's time, right?
And then did we submit any names for the town meeting today? I talked to Brian about that yesterday, so they are. Putting somebody. So I actually asked, I I know Maureen and, um. She's from us, um, but I would ask, I asked him, I must have asked. And I don't, doesn't think that. I felt Brad. Maybe last month. Just saying, hey, either way, we would have learned, um, it's with the reader, Brian, and also I just wanted to make sure that we have our student, uh, staff. First of all, um, our outreach. So. Yeah, we need to figure out. We can go to, let's see, there's. Um, the Green Meadow P T O was May fourteenth or June eleventh. Um, Fowler P T O is May sixth. Um, high school P T O is. May fifteenth or June nineteenth. And then we have. Green Meadow staff, um. Parents suggest we go to the, whoever's going to go to the P T O staff lunch on, um, May ten. Fowler, um, we have either the five fourteen or the six eleven. And then the high school is, uh, five fourteen. So, yes. So, um. I would suggest that at least two people go to the, to the staff stop, the P T Os. I think it will be, would be really. Short time if. People went, if somebody or two people could go to the five fourteen. Um, one, go to Fowler and then. Or go to the, go to the high school and then head to Fowler.
That's what we did, uh, we didn't did.
Right, but I scared the same school and then we not got to Green Meadow, yeah, on that last day, um. So I need to let them know. So if whoever is interested, if I have my name. Put their name in and and then maybe shoot me an email saying that they put there. Right, so. It is. It's in our goals folder. Yes, right. So that's. I was speaking with a teacher today, um, and. He was really pushing for us to really start on giving our school system. One of the things said was that, um. Get stuff at his hall, um. From Assabat all the time.
We pay, um, essentially too.
Assabat, but yeah, exactly, right, and, um. And, you know, he gets flyers, it's in the action of. Um, you know, and he basically saying, you know, we should, you know, really start working on trying to get. You know, use W A B M to its fullest extent in, you know, really trying to. Um, get our school name out, all the whole things. The amount of awards that our W A B M, um, has won is unbelievable. Just told me that. Um, so I don't know if we can, you know, somehow put that in the goal for next year. Um, for us, um, or for the schools to have that whole to to really try and. Um, you know, put it out there.
Maybe they, I think. Probably identifying what, what things that your school would want to do, I think, you know, like what events or whatever that might be. And then from there, we can come up with a strategy of how to get those particular ones. You know, to highlight, so what are the most things that I would. Book thing, I know obviously they've been reading, um. But, I mean, the high school, that's so. I don't know, really do a good job with.
We can do it outside of our, my, so I was like.
Yeah, exactly.
But not, but, right, yes, and and not only that, but, you know, we also need to. Do surrounding towns, um.
Well, how does Assabat? We don't, we only serve. Yeah, that's, we only serve meters, so that's what I'm wondering, I don't mean.
One, treat our students and possibly market our our school system so we could maybe bring in students for choice. Yeah.
Uh, I just want to be clear, I mean. Because like accident, different model.
Well, yes, I agree. No, I agree with that, but I'm saying that there's still people, you know, like. There, there could be kids that go to Assabat that don't realize that we have this wonderful W A B M. You know, so. Yeah.
I know. No, I know last year we did like a school choice or like marketing.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, um, but it was more like on social media.
Yep, we have to advertise.
Okay, did we, did we do one this year?
I haven't been.
Okay, so maybe that we could.
The dead life in the state hasn't, doesn't.
So maybe we think about like how do we block that up a little bit, um, like. Instead of, you know, just me there. Statutory pieces like how what other.
Let's not say we can't do more and be more strategic, but there has been. A pretty concerted effort to.
It's our year versus like when China is not metered in eighth grade. There were so many, the pathways of high school I never would have known about in a non school committee and. You know, I, I mean, it's like, you know, there's a Facebook group for younger kids or talking about different schools, like different thing. And I'm so impressed with talking about meters, but it was like all these things that I'm saying about how great meter is. I didn't really know a lot of details for years ago.
Well, that's why when personally you're talking about, that's why that needs to be all done with age for somewhere, because that's where it's, um, schools. Yeah, the regular, um, all that, like the classes that you take, so that's not. Fewer clips, the better.
And as far as another goal, so another goal is for our current residents to feel good about the money that is being spent. Like budget, and so they, we have a great support system of people that go to town, maybe. Level just here, and they support the schools, but the more that we can get that word out there, you know, return on investment.
Like, who would put a page handout out at town meeting? Like advertise to the pathways of high school, like. You know, just like one page that said like the type of pathways. Or even the color screen, you know, the television, like Fowler.
And not even just that, I mean, so many great things to go on, it's really cool, so I think it could be each principal, you know. Come up with five bullet points, yeah, just put her on chic, that's too much to ask. You and, uh.
But mostly I'm really excited about these policies. Organized and clear, and, uh, there are a few to go back to, but. I'm really excited that in a short while, people will be able to go to a website and actually see what our policy is for something. And there'll be one policy for a topic and. Will be wonderful, so I'm really excited.
Very, I'm only you too, yes.
She said yours before we started.
Oh, actually, not, all right, school meeting. I, I'm gonna be emailing the town for asking about process or. The seat this little bit, so that, just so.
I actually already spoke with Diana. Um, all, that needs to be, if there are write-in candidates, write-in candidate with four votes. Yes, off the position.
Well.
Yeah, so she said it, just one vote.
Okay, but also, um, I wanted to follow up with that person. Right, that's, I think, I think it goes the, the typical equipment process, and we just want more. Is it just about one, or do they go down the list?
I heard they go down the list.
She reached out about something else, because they're gonna be putting like, what it's. That is sent her, respond, I'm just gonna ask her. All right, I think that was it. Now, we are moving on to a couple of minutes and. Had Reese, that's a little less for. Um, so that objection, and that we approved, there's a couple of ninety-five thirty-five edits. Proof minutes from two ten twenty-four, two two twenty-four, two twenty-nine, four three eleven. They are approved, and then for this thing was. Moritz, uh, I did have one thing about Moritz, uh, I just noticed tonight, this is everyone. There were a lot of the, the new P card, there's that thing, that's information on there, so. For the school, give up a budget, um, some committee meetings, so I'm just gonna. It's just how, it's a big process. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that about the warrants, because I noticed that was passed up in a lot. Okay, so, uh.
And you got the answer to what they did for.
But I just wanted, I'm just. Yeah, I just wanted to get the descriptions of, of them, just moving forward, because they do. One of them was like the rest, you know, like it just has a town, I, 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 I get that they were, but, but I would. Yeah, but I wanna make sure it's that, you know, who, the dates, that basic stuff, just to. Um, support the business, uh, expense that we better stand, especially as a. Like Wayne had, like, he has his, was like, wait, this. Okay, um, so without objection, I, that we, by seven. Or it's twenty-four, oh, six one, oh, six two, oh, six three, oh, six four, oh, six five, oh, six six. Okay, those are accepted, um, I'm going to. Turn it over tomorrow. Alright, so this, this. There are three things that we're doing, we're doing second read. Approval, and then rescinding, the second, the second read, what I'm going to do is, I'm gonna do. The second and approval all in one. Okay, so, and I. Uh, Colleen and I talked a little bit about the process, um, and. I do not need to read all these. So, um, so what we're just gonna do is, um, just cite the, um, the document, document. Uh, which in. Okay, so, um. First off, it's a second question, yes, um, so, uh, will this, because it's not published, so. We make sure that they are.
The lists were attached to the agenda.
Oh, okay, they all were, and the policies to present. Oh, okay, never mind, sorry, I just wanna make sure. Okay, so the policies for the second read, motion to accept. Uh, and for the second reading, uh, listed the document, policies to S C second. Actual approval of B E I J K. Uh, four twenty-five, twenty-four, submitted to the school committee. Discussion. So these are probably. I worried. So it's, so it's without objection. Okay. No objection. Okay. Second one is the approvals for the, all the others, um. Without objection. We're going to approve the, the accepted policies. Um, as listed on the document, policies to S C approval, A, E, C, D, F, G, H, and L. Four twenty-five, four, that was submitted to the school committee. Policies two percent. Okay, so this one. Um, without objection. Have some, a slight amendment to the, to this one. Um, so without objection, we're going to present the policies as listed in the document, policies to send S C. Approved, four twenty-five, twenty-four, except for the following policies. It's two forty-one duplication of materials, three twenty-five loans of instructional. Materials to students not attending major public schools. Three eighty-one accident insurance, four oh six gift giving to students. Five eighteen exit interview, five nineteen student scholarships, five nineteen dash one. Dire. Dire Fowler Scholarship.
Tomorrow, there's also, I, I didn't capture them all, seven twenty-one flag displays.
Yeah, no, I, I pulled those. Yes, because we still need to, to do the full, full flag house and stuff, right, so I pulled those. All right, suppose we're sitting now. We can approve stuff. Uh, we will be doing, there are new that we still need to do, um, but this, this was the biggest. Chuck, and we do have some that we need to just review, and there were. Yes, the flag house is one of them, um, yeah, and we had a few that, we had, we had questions that we had not been able to get answers to. Didn't know one. Except, those were, it was, it's not received, right. I didn't wanna rescind them and then find out, oh, wow. Oh, no, really, do need that. Exactly, that's why I was like, I don't know enough about this, that's not rescinded, we didn't have a chance to really go through them. Uh, so, those are ones that we will still be looking at, and, and if we still need them, then we will. Um, make, make the, them mask. Letters.
Uh, so, one of our, um, policies that we've accepted has to do with the acceptance of, uh, approval of new policies. And it said that to have a date. Um, basically to give call to town, upload them, then to email them out and stuff. Um, we didn't talk about the actual date that they should be in effect, um. And there's a lot of policies, how long do you think?
Yeah, Heather helped me format and all that, so. Honestly, I have no idea.
Most of those should be.
They should be good.
Ready to go, I, I've gone through them all. Making sure that they are ready, so how, by status. They just need to be accessible.
Well, actually, the one of the policies said, when we approve them, they're not. Because we can't have a policy ineffective. Like, we can't have, we can't approve the policy tonight, the teachers are bound by tomorrow. So, we would be. Uh, the policy said that we both would move, but also announce a date that they. No, we just need to say now, what date are they?
So I, just six question, just because a few of the changes that are, I requested or whatever, it was like, it's gonna be in attachment. It's gonna be attached, yeah, who, like, is that also July first?
They, they, we approved them, the way it has happened, we wanna get additional information. So we're gonna work on the additional information, uh, and then we'll, we'll bring that to school committee once that's.
A lot of additional work is.
Yeah, we were thinking, because, because masks, and other schools use it as is, we're okay to approve them as is, but. You know, now, start working on the additional, um.
Um, one more possible question before. Um, are these safe in the, so I just wanted to like go through, to ask me a question about policy. Is this in the pause, like something for, like, for F Y two-five, that I would be able to just talk about, they, they will be. Things that we did, like, would they match in and stuff? Yes, so right now, those, uh, all of those are in our. Tonight's. Right. Folder, okay, but if we, okay. Right, but I might. Like, I have to remember the date, like. So basically, what I will probably do is go through them and move them to that folder. I was just gonna quote you and say that, that sounds like. Uh, and I totally wish that somebody would tell people. Um, that if you wanna cover a folder with everything you can have. Can you please just make them do that? Go in and like one, each, every single one, it was so. Alright, so I think, are we good? Alright, so I'll make a motion that we turn. Alright. Alright. Yes, okay, thank you all.